Slavé Suse Kristo, glory be to Jesus Christ! And welcome today for our next session. Last week, we completed the Book of Exodus, and today we begin the Book of Leviticus. So, good news, first of all, if you manage to read through all 27 chapters of Leviticus, that's great. And the good news is, if you didn't get through all of it, you're in luck, because we're going to cover Leviticus in two parts. So today, we're going to look at chapters 1 to 16, and then next Wednesday, we're going to look at chapters 17 to 27. Let us begin. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly King, Advocate, Spirit of Truth, who are everywhere present and fill all things, Treasury of blessings, bestow of life, Come and dwell within us, Cleanse us of all that defiles us, and, O Good One, save our souls. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, now and forever and ever, amen. The name Leviticus comes from the Greek word lutikos, which means pertaining to the Levites. However, this book was not written just for priests; it was written also for the people of Israel. It can be described as a how-to-worship book or guidebook, providing various regulations for priests and for the people with respect to offering sacrifices, maintaining ritual purity, and living a life of holiness. The Book of Leviticus is key in fully understanding the Old and the New Testaments. Now, if you look closely at your Bible, you will see that the Book of Leviticus stands at the very center of the Pentateuch. So the first five books of the Old Testament are called the Pentateuch. Pentateuch means five, five books. And so Leviticus is in the very center of the Pentateuch, not only location-wise, but also page-wise. So in my Bible, I looked at Genesis started page 1, and then looked at the end of Deuteronomy, and divided by 2, so page-wise, Leviticus is actually exactly in the middle. And so, when you look at the five books, so you have Genesis, the first book, beginnings, it's like a prologue; and then you have Exodus, the second book, leaving Egypt, the covenant, the building of the temple; and then Leviticus comes third in the middle, and deals with worship and service; and then the fourth book, Numbers, will speak about the dedication of the temple and desert wanderings; and the last book, Deuteronomy, will serve as an epilogue. According to tradition, the book was written by Moses, and it was written during the time that Israel encamped at Mount Sinai for a full year. So after the covenant had been renewed, Israel remained there, encamped at Mount Sinai, for a full year. Moses uses the phrase, "And the Lord said to Moses," as many as 30 times in the book, usually at the beginning of a chapter. So both Israel and the church ascribe authorship to Moses. Now, the Book of Leviticus can be divided into the following seven sections: the first, the five sacrifices; the second section, the priesthood; the third, ritual purity; the fourth, the day of atonement; the fifth, laws of holiness; the sixth, covenant blessings and curses; and the last section, voluntary dedications. So we will, over the course of today's session and next week's session, we'll go through all of these sections. So let's begin with the first, and that is the five different sacrifices. And it's found in Leviticus chapters 1 to 7. So the Book of Leviticus begins with a description of five different types of sacrifices. They are: whole burnt offerings, grain or cereal offerings, peace offerings, sin offerings, and guilt offerings. For the modern mind, it's difficult to understand the whole concept of animal and grain sacrifices. Why would the God of the universe want all these sacrifices from the Israelites? What do they mean? And why are there so many? Well, it's true. God had no need for them. However, the people did. They needed some concrete way to express their desire to worship God, to give Him praise, thanksgiving, to atone for sins, and to surrender and self-offer themselves to God. All the sacrifices have one basic thing in common. So if you put all five side by side, you'll find that all of them have one basic thing in common, and that is the act of self-offering, self-surrender, self-gift, that is expressed in the form of ritual. By placing his hand upon the head of the animal being sacrificed, the worshipper identified himself with the gift, and then symbolically offered himself to God. So let's look at the five different sacrifices. The first one is the whole burnt offering. A whole burnt offering, in which the whole gift is consumed by fire, is the first basic and most ancient form of sacrifice that goes back to the time of Abraham, the time of Noah, and even the time of Abel. The purpose of this sacrifice was to worship God, to offer Him praise and thanksgiving, to atone for any sins committed, and to offer one's whole life to God as a total gift. In Hebrew, the word for burnt offering is olah, which literally means ascending, because the entire animal ascends or goes up in smoke. In Greek, the word for burnt offering is holocaust, which means burnt in its entirety. The Hebrew word emphasizes more the movement and offering upward, while the Greek word emphasizes more the fact that the offering is completely consumed by fire. The Lord called Moses and spoke to him from the tent of meeting, and he said, "When any man brings an offering to the Lord to be offered as a whole burnt offering, you shall bring your offering from the herd," meaning from the cattle, the oxen, "or from the flock," meaning from the sheep or the goats." Leviticus 1, verse 2. "Only domesticated animals could be offered, animals that were dependent upon people who in turn were dependent upon them. To be acceptable, the gift of a whole burnt offering had to be a male, without blemish, perfect. Only the best was to be offered." The person presenting the gift, according to Leviticus chapter 1, 4, "shall lay his hand upon the head of the burnt offering, and it shall be acceptable for him to make atonement for him." And so, by laying his hand upon the head of the animal, the worshipper identifies himself with it. The animal is then killed by the worshipper. And as you know, blood is a symbol of life in the Old Testament. It was believed that the life of any animal or creature is in the blood. So now, the blood of the animal, the very life of the animal, now symbolizes the life of the worshipper. It's taken by the priests and thrown round the altar, which represents God. In the sacrificial ritual, the worshipper renews the gift of his whole life to God in the spirit of worship, praise, thanksgiving, and atonement for sin. After this, the body of the animal was then cut into pieces and placed upon the wood that is on the fire upon the altar. "And the priests shall burn the whole on the altar as a burnt offering to the Lord." Leviticus chapter 1, verses 9 and 13. "An offering by fire, a pleasing aroma to the Lord. Nothing of the sacrifice was eaten; everything ascended to God." This expressed the desire of the worshipper to be a total self-gift to God and a living sacrifice, offering everything to Him. "For those who were poor, who did not own their own herd or flock or could not afford to purchase an animal, an offering of turtle doves or young pigeons was acceptable." Now, this was the kind of offering, it was actually a purification offering, that Mary and Joseph offered at the temple in Jerusalem on the 40th day after Jesus's birth. Luke chapter 2, verse 24. Let's look at the next type of sacrifice, which is grain offering. A grain offering in Hebrew minha, which means gift or tribute, is the second most basic and most ancient form of offering to God, which also goes back to the time of Cain and Abel. So Abel sacrificed from his flock, and Cain offered from the fruit of the ground. The purpose of this sacrifice was also to offer to God worship, adoration, praise, and thanksgiving. Grain offerings were often made together with animal sacrifices. "The Lord said to Moses, 'When anyone brings a grain offering as an offering to the Lord, his offering shall be a fine flour. He shall pour oil, olive oil upon it, and put frankincense on it, and bring it to Aaron's sons, the priests. And he shall take from it a handful of fine flour and oil with all its frankincense; and the priests shall burn this as its memorial portion upon the altar, and offering by fire a pleasing odor to the Lord. And what is left of the grain shall be Aaron's and his sons.' It is the most holy part of the offering by fire to the Lord." Leviticus chapter 2, verses 1 and 2. And so we see that the leftover flour was considered most holy. It's referred to as most holy since it was consecrated to God, and it was reserved for the priests, and only the priests consumed it. Instead of fine flour, it was acceptable to offer baked or cooked cakes of fine flour mixed with oil or wafers spread with oil. Grain offerings had to be pure, prepared without any leaven. Honey was also forbidden, because like leaven, honey was associated with foods that ferment. All the offerings, the grain offerings, were seasoned with salt, a symbol of purity and sacrifice. It's important to note that in Israel, it was not believed that sacrifices in some way satisfied the needs of the deity as it was believed in pagan religions. Let's look at the next type of offering, sacrifice, and that is the peace offerings. The third kind of sacrifice was the peace offering in Hebrew shalameen. The Hebrew word stems from the word shalom, which means peace or wholeness. And the purpose of this sacrifice was to celebrate peace and communion with God. The animal offered could be male or female, perfect, without blemish, from the herd of cattle or from the flock of sheep and goats. The worshipper placed his hand upon the head of the animal, then killed it. The priest then took the blood of the animal, threw it against the altar and roundabout. The blood symbolized the life of the person making the offering, and the altar represented God. Now, the fat, which was believed to be the most precious part of the animal, was burned on the altar together with the kidneys and the liver, and offered to God. The priest and the people then ate the rest of the animal in a celebration feast of joy. Peace offerings were always accompanied with grain offerings. And if the peace offering was offered specifically in thanksgiving for something, then cakes of leavened bread and unleavened bread could also be offered, so the two could be offered together, both leavened and unleavened bread could be offered together. Since the peace offering was a communal meal with God, His priests and His people, it always followed some other offering, whether a whole burnt one or sin or guilt offering. So while sin and guilt offerings restored peace with God, the peace offering acknowledged it and celebrated it. So the peace offering was always a sacrifice of joy, celebration, and thanksgiving. The next sacrifice is the sin offerings. The fourth kind of sacrifice was the sin offering. The original Hebrew word here is hatat, which literally means sin. Hence, the purpose of this sacrifice was to restore communion with God through the forgiveness of sins. So if a person committed some kind of sin, voluntarily or involuntarily, by transgressing one of the Lord's commands or ordinances, the sin offering would purify and cleanse him; his sins would be forgiven. If the high priest committed a sin and the trespass became known, he would offer a young bull without blemish as a sin offering. The high priest would lay his hand upon the head of the animal, identify himself with it, then kill the bull before the Lord. The high priest would then dip his finger into the blood and sprinkle part of the blood seven times before the Lord in front of the first veil of the tent, which means at the entrance into the tent, the holy tabernacle. Then some of the blood would be placed on the horns of the altar of incense, which was within the holy place. The rest of the blood of the bull was poured out at the base of the altar of burnt offering. All the fat, the kidneys, and the liver were burnt on the altar. However, the skin of the bull and all its flesh, with its head, its legs, its entrails, and its dung, along with the ashes from the altar, the whole bull was carried outside of the camp to a clean place where the ashes were poured out and everything else was burned on a fire of wood. Now, in the situation that a whole congregation or the whole congregation of Israel committed a sin and the trespass became known, the assembly of people would offer a young bull. The elders of the congregation would lay their hands upon the animal, identifying the people with it. The bull was killed by the priest, who would take some of the blood and sprinkle it seven times before the veil at the entrance to the tent of meeting, and then enter the holy place and place some of the blood on the horns of the altar of incense. The fat, the kidneys, and the liver were burnt on the altar, the bronze altar, and the rest of the animal was burned outside the camp. Any ashes left on the altar were removed and poured out also outside the camp. If a ruler, meaning a king, prince, or leader, committed a sin and the trespass became known, he would offer a goat, a male, without blemish. He would lay his hand upon its head to identify himself with it, and then kill it. The priest would then take some of its blood with his finger and put it on the horns of the altar of burnt offering, and then the rest of the blood was poured out at the base of the altar. If anyone of the common people committed a sin and the trespass became known, he would offer a female goat without blemish or a female lamb without blemish. And the sacrifice ritual would be the same as that for a ruler. Now, if a person could not afford a lamb, he brought an offering of two turtle doves or two young pigeons, one for a sin offering and one for the burnt offering. If the person couldn't afford, so this is for the poorest of the poor, so those who could not even afford two turtle doves or two young pigeons, then that person brought an offering, a flower, as a sin offering. No oil was placed on it, nor frankincense. And the priest would burn a portion of it on the altar in atonement for the sin committed. The remaining flower was reserved for the priest, as in all grain offerings. And the last one, the guilt offerings, which is really not much different from the sin offering, just slightly. So the fifth kind of sacrifice was the guilt offering in Hebrew asham. And the purpose of this offering was also to restore communion with God through the forgiveness of sins, just like the sin offering. However, this offering was required of those who committed some kind of sin where there was a necessity to make restitution. So restitution, what is restitution? Restitution is defined as the restoration of something lost, broken, or stolen to its proper owner. It was also recompense for injury or loss. So guilt offerings were necessary for sins committed voluntarily or involuntarily, where restitution was necessary and also helpful to ease the conscience of the person who had committed the sin. Animal and grain sacrifices were offered to atone for the sins committed together with the restitution, the need to return, replace, restore, or compensate with the addition of a fifth to it. So you never just gave back what was broken or stolen; you added a fifth to everything. So, or you compensated in such a way that you did more than what was necessary. So it's not just replacing it, but giving back or making up for it in a greater way. And guilt offerings also helped to restore good relations with neighbors and so forth. The restitution guilt offerings are described in detail in Leviticus chapter 5, from verse 14 to chapter 6, verse 24. The first three sacrifices, the whole burnt offerings, the grain offerings, and the peace offerings, these three were offered from the time of Noah. However, the last two, the sin and guilt offerings, were introduced for the first time in history after the covenant at Sinai. So the new way in which Israel was called to live, to worship and to serve God, required ways to atone for any sins committed and to receive God's forgiveness. Let's look now at the priesthood, which is described in Leviticus chapters 8 to 10. "Within the people of Israel, God chose one of the twelve tribes, the tribe of Levi, and set it apart for liturgical service at the tent of meeting." So tent of meeting, tabernacle. The ordination ritual consisted of several steps. And note that Moses serves here as the supreme priest and prophet. He performs all the necessary actions to ordain Aaron and his sons to the Old Testament priesthood. So the first thing that happens is the washing of water. Moses said to the congregation, "This is the thing which the Lord has commanded to be done." And Moses brought Aaron and his sons and washed them with water." Leviticus 8, verses 5 to 6. So once they were washed, the second thing that happened was the vesting, the vesting of Aaron, the high priest. Moses vested Aaron in a white garment and girded him with the sinkshur. Another name for the sinkshur would be a girdle or sash. And then clothed him with the blue robe, and then put the ephod upon him. He placed the breast piece upon him with the various jewels representing the twelve tribes, and also set upon his head the turban. And in front of the turban, he set the golden plate, the holy crown, with the inscription, "Holy to the Lord." You'll find that in Leviticus 8, verses 7 to 9. The next thing to happen was the anointing with chrism. Moses took that special anointing oil, the chrism, and he anointed and consecrated the tabernacle and all that was in it. He poured some of the chrism on Aaron's head, anointing and consecrating him as the high priest. And then Moses brought Aaron's sons and clothed them also in their priestly garments, the white garment, the sash, and the cap, and he anointed them." Exodus chapter 40, verse 15. What followed then is the ordination sacrifices. Moses brought the bull of the sin offering, and Aaron and his sons laid their hands upon the head of the bull for the sin offering. Moses then killed the bull, took some of the blood with his finger, and put it on the horns of the altar, and poured out the rest of the blood at the base of the altar. He took the fat, the liver, and the two kidneys, and burned them on the altar, and the rest of the bull, its skin and flesh, was burnt outside the camp. Then he presented to Aaron the ram of the burnt offering; and Aaron and his sons placed their hands on the head of the ram; and Moses killed it and threw the blood upon the altar roundabout. When the ram was cut into pieces, Moses burnt the entire animal upon the altar as a burnt offering in worship of God. Then Moses presented a second ram, the ram of ordination. It was a peace offering. Aaron and his sons laid their hands upon the head of the ram, and Moses killed it. He took some of the blood with his finger. He put it on the tip of Aaron's right ear and on the thumb of his right hand and on the great toe of his right foot. He did the same to Aaron's sons. And then the fat, the liver, the kidneys of the animal, the ram, were burnt on the altar. And then Moses took one unleavened cake and offered it as a grain offering. So you see with the ordination, there's the sin offering, the bull, there's also a whole burnt offering, there's the peace offering, and finally, the grain offering. What followed was the ordination banquet. So the meat from the peace offering was prepared, and Aaron and his sons sat down to eat in a celebration feast which lasted seven days. On the eighth day, Aaron began his priestly ministry on behalf of the entire community. And at the end of the ritual offerings, when the final burnt offering was placed upon the altar, fire came forth from before the Lord and consumed the burnt offerings and the fat upon the altar. And when all the people saw it, they shouted and fell on their faces. Leviticus 9:24. Now I'd like to show you a kind of an interesting comparison because you have the priesthood here of the Old Testament, and the New Testament, the entire church will become the royal priesthood, a holy nation. So there's the royal priesthood of the people, the laity, and then there will also be a ministerial priesthood in addition that serves the royal priesthood. But you'll see that there is a parallel. There's a similarity between the ordination of the priests in the Old Testament and the initiation of a Christian into the church as a member of the royal priesthood. So in the New Testament, in the words of the apostle Peter, the initiation of a Christian into the church makes him a member of, and I'm quoting, a member of a chosen race, a royal priesthood, a holy nation, God's own people. You'll find that in the first letter of Peter, chapter 2, verse 9. And note the similarities between the Old Testament ordination and the New Testament initiation of a Christian into the church. So the Christian is first washed in holy baptism. The person is immersed into water three times in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit for the forgiveness of sins, and he is cleansed by the Holy Spirit. What happens next is the vesting. The newly baptized person is clothed, vested, in a white garment, which is called the robe of light or the robe of righteousness. And then the next thing that happens is that the person is anointed with holy chrism, consecrated, consecrated to God and sealed with the gift of the Holy Spirit. And then the last thing to happen is the banquet. Well, the sacrifice first, participation in the perfect sacrifice and the banquet. So the most holy Eucharist, baptized and anointed with holy chrism, the person participates now for the first time in the divine liturgy, the Eucharist, during which the perfect sacrifice of Christ on the cross becomes present, his death, his burial, and his resurrection. And in holy communion, the person then partakes of the holy gifts and receives the risen Lord Jesus, the Lamb of God, for the forgiveness of sins and life everlasting. We move on now to the next section that deals with ritual purity, clean versus unclean. And this is Leviticus, chapters 11 to 15. Now, the whole concept of clean and unclean is foreign to us. It has nothing to do with sinfulness or holiness or moral purity or impurity. Cleanliness or uncleanliness in the Old Testament was a measure of ritual purity, what is suitable to be in the presence of God, more specifically, the tent of meeting, and what is not. Unclean things are not suitable to be in the divine presence, whereas clean things are. Also, I think that this whole concept of clean and unclean has to do more whether a person is ready or not to enter into the presence of God, to come into the court, to stand there in prayer before the tent of meeting or to offer sacrifices. And the whole purpose of clean and unclean was to maintain a reverence for these things, that there's a kind of preparation required to enter into the presence of God, so that these things won't, do not become kind of common, but to maintain a sense of holiness for the things of God. So let's look at animals. Leviticus, chapter 11, animals that are clean and unclean. So certain animals in Leviticus 11 are deemed to be clean. They can be eaten, and some of those animals are taken from the herd or flock to be offered in sacrifice at the tent of meeting. These animals are cloven-footed, so the hoof is divided, and they chew cud. They include oxen, sheep, lambs, and goats. Any fish living in water that has fins and scales, it has to be both fins and scales, that fish is clean. Certain locusts are also clean, crickets, and grasshoppers are considered to be clean. Certain animals and living creatures are deemed to be unclean and are not to be eaten. They include the following: camels, swine, rabbits, badgers, eagles, vultures, ospreys, falcons, ravens, ostriches, hawks, seagulls, owls, waterhens, pelicans, storks, herons, bats, mice, rats, weasels, snakes, lizards, crocodiles, and most insects. The following creatures living in water are considered to be unclean: catfish, sharks, swordfish, sturgeon, eels, dolphins, otters, whales, seals, porpoises, octopus, squid, scallop, shrimp, crab, clam, crayfish, and lobster. Kind of reduces your menu. So if a person ate an unclean creature or touched a dead carcass of an unclean creature, he would become ritually unclean, and he would have to undergo a process of purification. So why were certain creatures declared to be unclean? And the first reason is hygienic. Unclean creatures were bad for human health, and they were prohibited by God to ensure the physical well-being of the Israelite people. So many of these creatures that were deemed unclean, they were carriers of disease, such as mice and bats. Some were carriers of parasites, like pigs. And a lot of them were carriers of various toxins, like shellfish or, what's that fish called again? Catfish. These things are bottom feeders. So they would be picking up all the kind of toxin stuff that that we really don't want in our bodies. Now, a second reason why these things were deemed unclean, the reason is religious and cultural. So the unclean creatures were associated with the Gentiles, their pagan religions and culture. So to avoid eating these particular creatures was to be different, to be holy, to be set apart from all the other nations in worship and in service to God. Now let's look at human beings, being clean or unclean, Leviticus, chapters 12 to 15. So to enter the court of the tabernacle, tent of meeting, a person needed to be ritually clean, healthy, and normal. Anyone ritually unclean was unsuitable to enter into the presence of God and needed to first undergo a process of purification or cleansing. Again, it is important to remember that clean or unclean has nothing to do with moral purity or impurity. So these are, again, customs to ensure that we maintain reverence. So the preparation kind of, in our minds, it's sort of sending a message that you just, you just can't go. There's there's some personal preparation required. So for example, I'll give you a more modern example. If we're coming to the divine liturgy, part of the process of repairing is, you know, washing, dressing in our best, preparing with fasting, and then arriving on time and so forth. So all of these things aren't, there's no, they're not morally right or wrong, they're just simply part of that process of preparation. So to be cleaner, the rules of cleanliness have to do with ritual and maintaining a sense of reverence for holy things. So anyone ritually unclean was unsuitable to enter into the presence of God and needed first to undergo a process of purification or cleansing. Again, it is important to remember that clean or unclean has nothing to do with moral purity or impurity. In most cases, the process of purification that restored a person to ritual cleanliness included the following. First, there would be a designated length of time. So it might be a day. It could be seven days. In the case of giving birth to a male child, it would have been forty days. In the case of giving birth to a female child, it would have been eighty days. The second point in the in the process of purification was bathing. So bathing for purification. And special pools for bathing were called mikvahs with flowing water. So bathing was a very important step in the process of purification. And then the third thing, so sometimes the designated time and the bathing was enough for the purification process. But in some cases, in addition to those two things, the offering of sacrifices was also required. So in the case of childbirth or contact with death. A separate process and ritual was required for the purification of a person that had been healed from leprosy, and this ceremony is outlined in Leviticus, chapter 14. So what made a person ritually unclean? And the common thread for all the cases is contact with death, something dead, or contact, or sorry, or some kind of loss of life. An unclean person would contaminate anything or anyone they touched. So the following is a list of situations that would render a person unclean. So the first one is contact. A person would become unclean by touching a dead body or a carcass of a dead animal. Also, a person would become unclean by touching blood or any person that was unclean. The second situation is childbirth itself, because at childbirth, the loss of blood and the loss of body fluids is considered to be a loss of life. So contact with blood would make the mother ritually unclean. After the days of, after the days of purification are completed, a burnt offering and a sin offering would be offered to make the woman clean again. Note that after completing her days of purification, Mary and Joseph brought Jesus to the temple, so it would have been forty days, where two turtle doves or pigeons were offered to complete her ritual purification. Next is the skin diseases and leprosy. So loss of blood and body fluids from the skin or the flesh was considered to be a loss of life. Anyone infected was ritually unclean and needed to be quarantined, set apart from the community. And you see God's providence working here, because no one knew anything about bacteria and viruses. But this forced anyone who came out with some kind of skin disease was quarantined in order not to infect others in the community, to keep the community healthy. The cleansing ritual of a person healed of leprosy is outlined in Leviticus, chapter 14. The emission of semen. So the loss of seed which contained life is considered also to be then a loss of life. Bodily discharges rendered a person unclean for a certain time. Menstruation. Loss of blood is a loss of life. Bodily discharges rendered a woman unclean for a certain time. And finally, marital intercourse. The loss of seed and the loss of body fluids also considered to be a loss of life and would render a person unclean for a certain time. That brings us now to the next section, which is the Day of Atonement, Leviticus, chapter 16. So the Day of Atonement is also known as Yom Kippur. And this chapter, on this day, the Day of Atonement, stands in the very center of the book of Leviticus. So you have the laws of ritual purity on one side of it, and then the laws of holiness on the other side of it. So it's right in the middle of the book of Leviticus. According to Leviticus 16:29, "The day of atonement was to be observed every year on the tenth day of the seventh lunar month," which works out to the end of September. I think this year it'll be September 28th. So it could be early October, end of September. And the Day of Atonement takes place five days before the feast of tabernacles. That's that harvest feast, the third feast of the year that was prescribed at Mount Sinai. "The rituals of this day both cleansed and reconsecrated the priests, the people, and the sanctuary." The Day of Atonement was designated as a Sabbath of solemn rest. No work was to be done, including food preparation. For all the people of Israel, it was a day of prayer and penance, a day of fasting from evening to evening. a day of fasting from evening to evening, a day of abstinence from all physical work and sexual relations. And the Day of Atonement became the most solemn day of the Israelite liturgical calendar to this day." "On the Day of Atonement, the high priest would offer a bull as a sin offering for himself and his house," which meant for all the priesthood. "He took some blood and sprinkled it with his finger seven times before the veil of the tent." So that's kind of the entrance into the tabernacle. "He then entered the holy place and placed some of the blood on the horns of the altar of incense. And in this way, the altar of incense was purified." "After this had been done, the high priest took a censer full of coals of fire from the altar of incense and two handfuls of incense. And then he entered into the Holy of Holies, where he burned the incense on the fire before the ark of the covenant, so that the cloud of incense covered the mercy seat and filled the Holy of Holies. Then taking some blood from the bull that was sacrificed, he sprinkled it with his finger seven times upon and before the mercy seat to atone for his own sins and for the sins of the priesthood." "Two goats were chosen and brought before the door of the tent of meeting." So that's kind of the door that goes, the first door into the courtyard. "The high priest would cast lots upon the two goats, one for the Lord and one for Azazel. Azazel was an evil spirit or the desert demon. The goat on which the lot fell for the Lord would be presented as a sin offering for the people. The goat on which the lot fell for Azazel would be sent into the wilderness to make atonement." "So the goat that was chosen for a sin offering for the people was then sacrificed by the high priest at the altar. He then brought some of the blood from the sacrificed animal into the Holy of Holies and sprinkled it upon and before the mercy seat." So we see here that the high priest on that particular day may have entered the Holy of Holies possibly two or three times. So the first time, to offer the incense, to bring incense before the mercy seat. The second time, to bring the blood of the bull and then for, as an atonement for the high priest and the priesthood. And then, and then finally, the blood of the goat in atonement for the sins of the people. "Then the high priest took blood from both the bull and the goat and put it on the horns of the bronze altar, round it." So that's where all the sacrifices were burnt. "He sprinkled some of the blood with his finger seven times and cleansed and rededicated the altar of burnt offering." And it is possible that after this, that the rest of the blood from the bull and the goat were then poured out at the base of the altar. "Next, the live goat was presented," and this would have taken place at that door, the first entrance into the court. "The high priest would lay both his hands upon the head of the goat and confess over him all the iniquities of the people of Israel and their transgressions, all their sins." Leviticus chapter 16, verse 21. "This ritual symbolized the transfer of the people's sins to the animal, which would then carry their sins off into the wilderness. 'The goat shall bear all their iniquities upon him to a solitary place; and the man leading the goat out would then let it go free into the wilderness.'" Leviticus chapter 16, verse 22. "The high priest would then remove his linen garments, bathe in water, put on his garments once again, and then come to the altar of burnt offerings, where he would offer his burnt offerings and the burnt offering..." So he would offer his burnt offering, so a ram, and also another burnt offering for the people, also a ram, so two rams. "The fat from the sin offerings, from the bull and the goat, were then burnt on the altar. The bodies of these two animals, their skin, flesh, dung, and trails, were carried outside the camp, where they were burned in a clean place." And so on this Day of Atonement, with these sacrifices and ritual, entrance into the Holy of Holies, the sprinkling of blood on all the very different things, the altar, the altar of incense. So in this way, the priesthood, the people, and the whole sanctuary, the tent of meeting, were purified and re-consecrated to God. I'd like to conclude today with a New Testament connection. In the New Testament, the letter to the Hebrews, the rites of the Day of Atonement are described as being prefigures or types which are fulfilled in Christ, the true high priest. So Hebrews, when you look at that letter, it'll talk about the Day of Atonement and what happened on the Day of Atonement and make a connection with Jesus, identifying Him as the true high priest. So I will quote from the book, from the letter of Hebrews, chapter 9, verses 11 to 14. "But when Christ appeared as a high priest of the good things to come, He entered once for all into the holy place, taking not the blood of goats and calves, but His own blood, thus securing an eternal redemption. For if the sprinkling of defiled persons with the blood of goats and bulls and with ashes of all heifers sanctifies for the purification of the flesh, how much more shall the blood of Christ, who through the eternal Spirit offered Himself without blemish to God, purifying your conscience from dead works to serve the living God?" Okay, so what does that mean? Jesus, the promised Messiah, became the perfect sin offering. He sacrificed Himself once and for all for the forgiveness of sin. He was also, so he was both the, so he's the sin offering. The bull and the goat that were offered for the sins of the priesthood and the people and then sprinkled upon the ark of the covenant. So He became that perfect sin offering. But He also was that chosen scapegoat upon whom all the sins of the world were placed, which He carried outside the camp, meaning outside of the city of Jerusalem, where He became the atonement for all the sin and transgressions of the world by His death on the cross. At the same time, Jesus, the promised Messiah, became the true and eternal high priest. In His resurrection and ascension, Jesus as God and man entered heaven itself, the true Holy of Holies, and seated at the right hand of the Father. His precious blood continues to intercede in atonement on our behalf. That concludes our session today. And so if you haven't read through all of Leviticus, I'd invite you to continue reading. Next week, we will focus on chapters 17 to 27 and conclude the book of Leviticus. Let us pray.